Good morning, we'll call the meeting to order today. First order of business is approval of our agenda for the day.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, do we have any citizens that would like to be heard on anything that is not on the agenda for the day? Seeing none, we have a number of employee recognitions this morning. So we'll start that. The first one today is Gaiha Anderson. Presenting grateful recognition of 15 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. You guys appreciate that. Morning Linda. Also presented in grateful recognition of 15 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Social worker. Morning Deborah. Also presented in grateful recognition of 15 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you very much. Kirsten Wagenast. Social worker. Morning Kirsten. Presented in grateful recognition of 15 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. John Burkle, Sheriff's Office. Morning John. Also presented in grateful recognition of 20 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. Greg Jensen. Tony Accurdy's office. Morning Greg.
Morning.
Presented in grateful recognition of 25 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. Levee Sambert. Financial worker with Social Services, morning.
Good morning.
Also presented in grateful recognition of 25 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. And last but not least, Linda Heller, Office Manager of the Sheriff's Department. And she's only got to meet her 45 years. Presented in grateful recognition of 45 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. Jenny? Okay, we'll let the chambers clear here and then we'll resume.
Can you sit there with all your friends? Can you sit there with all your friends?
Yeah, absolutely. Everybody sees that in the video though.
Yeah, you can clear a room pretty fast. So it's just...
[laughter]
That's what happens when you deal with solid waste. You come out and everybody moves out, so...
Gets in your pores.
Okay, we'll move on with our agenda. Approve payment of bills and vouchers.
So move.
Second.
Motion to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Approved minutes of the February 17th and 24th, 2014 meetings.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Okay, Julie, come on up. First item on our agenda is to request...
Request to replace a full-time corrections officer. Jail Administrator Julie Savat, good morning.
Good morning. Yes, we'll have a vacancy coming up with...for a full-time female corrections officer. She's been selected as a new tact officer for the Clay County Sheriff's Department and we're looking at this to be starting the last week of March and so we'd like to hire the first week of April. This is part of the approved staffing plan that's been approved by the Department of Corrections.
Any budget implications?
Yeah, actually it was about $8,000 worth of savings, so...
That's good.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Julie, I just wanted to thank you for your presentation last night and thank you for representing the county.
Absolutely, great work, yeah.
Appreciate that, thank you. Had a lot of help with Justin Roberts, so he deserves a lot of credit.
Thanks to him as well.
Tell him too that we appreciate you guys being there and it was excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, Kirk, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, you run a good meeting here. We're just getting on here.
We're efficient.
We all have to leave for St. Paul, so we don't want to...
Oh, that's right, you're going down and you can have a tough travel. I talked to some people down there today and they said the roads are interesting.
Exciting.
So, it'll be fun. Couple items for you today. The first one is basically what we need to have is an agreement, we need to sign an agreement with Prairie Lakes. It's a waste supply agreement. And essentially, we've already done this, but they want us to formalize it in a different sort of way. So that's essentially what you have before you today is just to sign it. Prairie Lake has four of the other counties, four of the other five counties have signed this waste supply agreement. We're the last ones to sign, so it's nothing new, nothing that we haven't talked about before. So that's before you write down to be signed.
We need a motion.
Yeah, a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to have him sign this as it's presented.
I second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
The second item I have is, and I apologize, it got buried under a bunch of papers on my desk. We kind of want to get this done. We have talked about this before. It's...we have, as part of our landfill re-permitting, the PCA wants us to put in another well nest, a series of wells on the perimeter of the landfill. And the main reason why is they just want to test to ensure that there is any additional problems with water migrating offsite. Honestly, I don't know why we have to do this, but we have to do this. We put out, or we submitted requests for proposals from three different well drilling firms. We got responses back from two. This is the one that's the cheapest and it seems like it can do the job the best. The money for this will come from the landfill budget, so it's somewhat unanticipated, but we have enough money to cover it. In addition to the bid that you have, there's also about $10,000 additional that we have to have from Wink, essentially. Essentially, what they do is they oversee the drilling and they prepare the drilling report and things like that. So that's what this is about. I'm not real happy about this, just let the record show that. It is what it is, exactly.
Discussion, are there any questions for Kirk on this?
And this will be completed in early March, is that...
We hope to get it done early because the area where we're looking at drilling, putting the well nest is, can get a little bit wet and so we hope to get in there within the next two or three weeks to try and get it completed, yes.
I was probably reading while you were talking, what happens if we didn't do it? Did you...
We're gonna have problems getting our permit from our, from the PCA.
If I wasn't listening, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Good enough. Safe travels today and make sure when you talk to legislators not to forget about the solid waste project. I've sent numerous letters to them and some of them have been more humorous than others and we did get some good news last week, just as an aside. Waste Management is interested in having us help process approximately 9,000 tons of source separated material that they collect in...in...in Bismarck, so that's a very, very positive thing. We're talking to Minkota, who's also interested in helping us, helping them process, so that's also very, very good news. So it's coming along, I'm feeling pretty positive, but what that state money would be very, very helpful. And as I told the legislators, we're only asking for $6 million out of $1.87 billion, so it's a small amount. So I appreciate your help on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're already at committee reports. Wayne, you want to...
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. On Thursday, February 26th, Family Health Care, which I had to, I went to instead of Lakes and Prairies, which Jenny was at, they're conflicted, they're held both at the same time. General Business, Reports on Patient Services and Language Services. Eight different languages are interpreted for patients by Family Health Care. The Financial Report, and Family Health Care is in great shape financially, and the Chief Executive Officers' Report, and all as well. Also on Thursday, the 26th, I attended the Local Advisory Council for Children's Mental Health Luncheon for Rule 79 caseworkers in Moorhead and Clay County. Rule 79 is legislation in Minnesota for people who work with children with mental health issues. About 30 were in attendance. It was organized by Carolyn Sternad and it went very, very well. And then on Friday, November 27th, Lake Agassy Regional Library for Northern Lights Library Network Executive Meeting, we formally closed out the townsite location of Northern Lights Library and we are now located at the Minnesota State University Moorhead Library in a very first-class location with secure, dirty and all kinds of things that are much improved.
Thank you. Frank?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One more thing, at our meeting last night, Chuck Chadwick gave me his card, he is now Business Consultant for the official legal newspaper for Clay County, The Extra, and he said if any of us want to make any comments to him regarding Clay County, I mean over and above what the chair would have to say, he'd be very happy to speak with any of us and give us the space and the newspaper.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last Tuesday, we had a meeting with Wilkin County on the highway. They need to, want to share accounting engineer and I guess what we did at that meeting just mostly, they didn't really come to us with figures and stuff like that, how much they're willing to pay or how much time really it's gonna be, but just wanted to know whether we'd be interested or not, so I guess we're both gonna go back and, if they're gonna go back, I should say, and try and get some more information as far as how many hours they're looking at, what they're willing to pay and stuff like that, then we really didn't proceed or agree to anything yet, so I'm probably gonna get in on that one.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, the discussion was, is that with the busy schedule that we've got, if there's gonna be any work done on the part of, and it's, they'd like to be one or the other of the two engineers, not both, just I think, and it's, would be better for them to be that way, because they need to be more familiar already with it. The problem with it is, is we made it clear that it would have to be hours over and above the 40-hour week and so we stressed that to our employees as well, stating that our concern and you can get a burnout factor in there that I personally would have a concern with. But anyway, so we sent back asking them to be more specific with how many hours they would look at needing per month and what kind of dollars are they bringing to the table. We're gonna give them that and go from there, but, and our administrator too, shared some real concerns too about just the amount of time, so I, it's got a ways to go before this could happen, so...
Yeah, it's got a long ways down, that's the way I...
I think that's the issue, we've got plenty of full-time work for our people and so, you know, how much are they able to deal with, so...
And if you recall, over the last few years, we kind of changed the way we did our five-year plan and how we funded it and when we went out and did that bonding, it allowed us to escalate or bring up the projects and get them done quicker. So towards the tail end, that left some free time, but now we're ready to start designing in for the next five years where so that we can redo this again. So there isn't gonna be any downtime for these fellows to have a lot...
That's why we thought it would be above the 40 hours a week that they put in, you know, and what rate are you gonna pay, the overtime rate or the regular rate or what are you looking at, you know, stuff, so...
I think it's a long ways to go, yeah. And it would still, Jenny, this whole discussion too, it all centered around, all of that would still be paid from Clay County to the employees, so the money would funnel from Wilkin County into a fund and then we would pay them all, the pair and everything would come out of Clay County's. So, but, this, it's got a ways to go, but we, you know, we're a little skeptical, I think, of its being able to work, but we wanted to at least give them one opportunity to say just what, how much money you got and how many hours do you need, so...
Hey Frank, did you have more?
No, Wednesday night I went to Holly for the Holly Comprehensive Plan, which Sue Metzgercock, I'm a member of, and they're, right now they're really working on their sidewalk plan and they had public input as far as where they would like to see, they showed people where are the sidewalks, where they have good ones, fair ones, poor ones, you know, where people would like sidewalks and stuff like that, so they've had around 15, 20 people there, you know, looking at over, giving their ideas and we're gonna take those ideas and put them into a plan for them, show Holly where they're at on that. And then of course, last night we had the meeting at the AMCO Center where we're all were present, I guess, and I guess all I got, I mean not all I got out, what I got out of the meeting, we're talking a lot of money, so I mean, I realize our project is the jail project, but when you combine that for the citizens of Moorhead and stuff like that, schools in Moorhead, you're talking a lot of money, so we have to look at funding for this and whether it's through our legislators or what, you know, but whether it's sales tax, whether it's property tax, funding from the legislators, it's, Clay County needs a lot of money right now. That was it.
Thank you.
Kevin?
All right, last Tuesday after a meeting, like Frank said, we just talked, we talked about the meeting with Wilkin County. Wednesday, I was at the Lakes, Prairie Lakes Municipal Solid Waste Meeting in Purim and right now there are legal issues going on there in regards to the second boiler that was constructed and it's not meeting what we all believe were the specifications and so there's, it's that process right now of who's pointing fingers at who for not having it work correctly and, so we're just getting into the, getting into the phase where attorneys might get involved. But there's definitely some issues there with lack of performance of the facility compared to what we wanted it to and as a result, it's not generating the steam that it was originally designed to carry and that, which also meant it's been a loss in revenue to Lakes and Prairies, or Prairie Lakes in the Civil Solid Waste. So when they budget a dollar amount and it comes far short because they, the steam didn't produce as it was set it would, there's issues, so, but we'll be working through those. Then on Thursday, I went to the Regional Water Plan Joint Powers Board meeting in Menomon and that's the one that deals with the Basin Commission and there was two positions up for the Basin Commission, one they wanted from the north end and one from the south end, plus two alternates. And because Stephanie Marinowski had been John's alternate before she was elected as the representative from our southern counties and then I was elected as the alternate for the Basin Commission, so, and all alternates are still supposed to go to all the meetings and everything, so we have to add another, another line on my tasks of things to do. So, and let's see. I did meet with some members of the Diversion Authority staff on Friday. There was some potential of having a discussion on tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. with Commissioner Landwehr from the DNR and so we just had a meeting to kind of get brought up to speed on potential items that would be discussed there. Then yesterday, we had our jail construction meeting and kind of went over what our Finance Committee had done in terms, and what this board had done in terms of authorizing to go out and look at potential land acquisitions for, need for parking. And we went through several other items and maybe Grant will want to follow up on that, but it was overall a good meeting. We're going to tour Alexandria's jail on the 18th of March. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Jenny?
Last Tuesday, I attended the Planning Commission meeting where they approved a couple of Verizon Towers that we had heard about and just mainly general business. There was a little bit of concern from the Planning Commission members. Last week, if you recall, we had opted to elect the remaining four commissioners as alternate to that board. They would prefer that there would be one that would serve as more likely to go, the kind of second in line, just for ease of preparing, I would guess. Jenny, is that what you would classify it as, maybe?
I think so, for maybe consistency and just having people in attendance that are acquainted with the issues at hand. They, Planning Commission would prefer, say, a first alternate and a second alternate, in some sort of order. That was their wish, now of course they can't dictate that to this board.
Right, but I just, I had told them that I would bring their concerns to you and so...
I would, I would think that if Jenny couldn't make it and one of the alternates, because that doesn't necessarily mean that the first alternate can make it either. What's more important is we have somebody of this five-member group there and if it means taking a little bit more time to study up on the issues, then that's what it takes. That would happen whether Jenny couldn't be there in the first alternate and couldn't be there, nobody would be there, then there would be no presentation of our board, so I, I guess I would kind of have a tendency to disagree with, I just think, I think it gives more opportunity to make sure there is somebody from the county board present.
Mr. Chair? I would agree with Kevin to leave it the way it is for us and we can relate that to them.
Great, I will do that. Thursday then, I attended the Lakes and Prairies Community Action Meeting at the Eagle in Barnesville where we just discussed general business. Dan Rowley from there did a very great presentation on the food and the elderly assistance in the county. We covered some business as we moved closer to Mr. Peterson's retirement, how that merger will go with the Director of West Central and I feel like we have a pretty good collaboration to share him in the meantime. Yesterday, I attended the Law Library Meeting, it was my first one there, so I appreciate that. And then last night, I just want to thank again all the entities from the Moorhead City Council and the Moorhead School Board and us at the county. There are a lot of dollars that need to be spent and I think we are cautious to strain our constituents and community members, so I appreciate the dialogue as we move forward with our projects and that's...
Mr. Chair, last night at the end of that meeting that Jenny, we were all at, did it, believe it came up that you and somebody else would be on future meetings, was it one or two of us?
Two.
Two.
And who were the two?
We haven't picked anybody yet, so...
Okay, but I would suggest that Perdium goes with that for whoever...
Okay, well, we can do that.
Fine, whatever.
Well, we can do it now, I guess do, so, who's interested in, Kevin, you're the Chair of the Jail Committee, so you'd probably be the most likely to serve as one of the two people from the Commission on that group, so...
I'd do that.
Okay, Kevin?
I just, I think, you know, I think it'd be an opportunity to get Jenny involved with something new too, I'm just throwing that out there, she's...
You interested in that?
I'd be interested, I, you know, if you, you being on the Jail Committee, that would be...
That's fine, I mean, as long, you know, as long as somebody from the Jail Committee is there, as long as Kevin's willing to do it, that's why, I think it's...
I got the impression you've got plenty to do, that's why I didn't suggest you...
Yeah, I've got too many committees already.
I would suggest though, as Chair of this board, you would possibly be an alternate in this, and I would still move Kevin, Jenny and you as an alternate with Perdium.
Have that motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Hold it, go ahead Frank, sorry.
I guess, I was under the impression that they wanted the, like the mayor and the head of the school board and you, the head of the county, I thought you three would be on this along with another representative from here, so, I mean, it's fine, I mean Kevin, I mean, if you're not, if you don't want to do it, I'm okay with that, you know, but I was under the impression they wanted the head people to do it.
I just assumed, sure.
They just wanted the chairs to approve the fact that we would send representatives.
Yeah, they wanted, that was the way I understood it, they wanted two people, they wanted each of us to appoint two people, if that would be the mayor or myself.
The mayor might not even appoint herself.
Yeah, so...
Okay, like I said, I was just getting, that's fine, I have nothing against anybody beyond this.
No, that's, no, it's good to have clarification.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
We gotta figure out what that's gonna be called.
What is that committee?
The Major, Major Projects Committee, because that's what they're really talking about, are the major projects in the city, the school district and the county, right? That's kind of what the meeting was about, what our, what our major...
We gotta be careful because we have other joint purposes.
Why don't you talk to Mr. Redlinger about that? He kind of was seeing a vision of...
And it's only one school district, it's not several school districts, so it's, we gotta be careful how we...
Well, we'll figure something out, Vicki, and you know, so... Okay, I had the Jail Committee meeting yesterday too, I think that's moving along as we hoped. I thought the meeting we had last night, I think we did get the message out, our jail staff both did an excellent job, I thought, presenting their information. jail staff both did an excellent job, I thought, presenting their information to the City Council and the school district about what our position was on the, our situation was on the jail. And then it seemed to be a lot of interest by those attending about, you know, had a lot of questions about, about what this project entails and I think we did get the message out, though, that we, we don't really have any options in terms of building a jail. We are going to build a jail. The issue is how are we going to fund it and that's what we're trying to work on and resolve now, so... And other than that, that's, was it for me, so...
And maybe going back to the jail meeting yesterday afternoon, too, we, we did research and, and the, we researched the issue about the former architect and, and where we are right now with those plans and those plans still technically are owned by them, so in all likelihood, as we move forward, we'll probably want to stay with them because we've got a lot of dollars invested in those plans already. You know, so I think at some point in time, we'll meet with the Finance Group again and I think we're going to have to also look at some dollars to go into this, to redefine that scope of what was done eight years ago and make sure we put it in today's dollars. And not only that, to make sure that there aren't any DOC corrections that have been made or changes that have been made to the design of this facility that would keep, you know, we want to make sure that we stand compliant. Julie is pretty sure that that's the case, that we still would be, but we, we do need to move in that direction as well, so...
Yeah, it should be much more cost-effective, you know, and if we, if, if the former plan were something we weren't interested in at all, that would be one issue, but the plan, one of their plans is probably pretty much what we're looking at anyway for the future jail, so, so it'll be much more cost-effective to utilize that same firm, so...
I think one of the, one of the largest stumbling blocks in trying to determine how we're going to do it isn't the jail itself, it's the Law Enforcement Center.
Yeah.
You know, because that's, that facility is going to be hopefully a joint facility between the City of Moorhead and Clay County and it's all part of this design of this one major project, but we need to make sure that we know which entity is going to be responsible for what, so...
Okay, Jenny, you have anything?
I don't, thank you.
Darren, you have anything?
No, I'm just trying, I'll be back on Thursday, in Southern Florida, and next week I'll bring you the social worker and case aids contracts for approval and then the only contract we have left out is the attorney's contract and we're supposed to meet with them on April 1st, so...
Good.
Okay.
Anything else? Nikki, anything? All right.